Ms. O'Brien, are you ready to go back on the record? Ms. O'Brien, you may be on mute. Are you, are you ready to go back on the record?
Yeah, I was speaking and I've, you guys had me to me. Yes, I am ready to go. Sorry for the delay.
Very good. Thank you. All right. I, we are back on the record for the rebuttal phase of the Sites Project Authority hearing, and I believe where we left off was to start with Mr. Ferguson's cross-examination of Mr. Assyrian. So if we could get Mr. Assyrian and Mr. Ferguson to the screen here, and then I will turn the floor over to Mr. Ferguson.
If I may, on what housekeeping matter, just in terms of witness schedule? After Mr. Assyrian will be, the schedule will be, that will be Dr. Brunner, and then followed by Les Marston, due to a scheduling issue associated with Mr. Marston.
Okay.
I just wanted to give a heads up about that and make sure that there was no issues with that for Sites Project folks.
Thank you, Mr. Mooney. Will the authority be prepared to proceed with Dr. Brunner?
Hmm, that's not ideal. That's not what we understood. There's no other adjustment you can make to make sure Marston's ready?
Uh, no, it's, there's, it's, it's my understanding there's not. I'm, I'm not the attorney handling Mr. Marston, but, but it's my understanding that that's the, that's the situation we're in.
Okay. Well, I might suggest this, after Assyrian's cross-examination, if we could perhaps take a 15-minute break, that would be helpful, I think.
Yes, let's plan on that. And I assume that means we probably won't get to Mr. Marston until tomorrow. Just thinking about how these, these things tend to go and, so, okay.
We might get close. I don't, based on what I recall for our estimates across exam, but I'll just throw that out there.
All right. Well, let's, um, let's see where we get. We'll take a 15-minute break after Mr. Assyrian, and then, then we'll talk about how we're going to proceed and when Mr. Marston, we can expect Mr. Marston to be available. All right. Thank you for that, Mr. Mooney and Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Ferguson, the floor is yours for cross-examination.
Great. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mr. Assyrian. Good to see you again.
You need to come off mute, Mr. Assyrian.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Mr. Assyrian, I'm gonna start on page two and three of your testimony with some questions about your statements concerning Dr. Winslow's adjustments to precipitation in the CEqual model related to his evaporation analysis. Do you recall those passages of your testimony?
Yep.
Okay. And on page three, at lines three through five, you state, "To further diagnose the issue, Mr. Winslow should have compared CEqual evaporation predictions for sites to other evaporation estimates for sites." That is calcium two and other reservoirs, correct?
Yes.
Is it your understanding that Dr. Winslow adjusted the precipitation in the CEqual model to ensure consistency in evaporation with the USR DOM model?
Um, just give me a moment to refresh my memory here. Yes.
And is it your understanding that the USR DOM model is a daily operations model that sites use for, among other purposes, to simulate daily flow and storage conditions in the upper Sacramento River and anticipated daily inflows to sites reservoir?
Um, I am not very familiar with the USR DOM. It's a, it's a phrase that I recognize, but it's not something that I ever looked at carefully.
Okay. But you understand that the USR DOM model was used by the authority for various hydrologic modeling purposes, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And by comparing the evaporation in the CEqual model to the evaporation in the USR DOM model, Dr. Winslow compared the estimate of evaporation CEqual with other evaporation estimates for sites, correct?
Uh, I am not sure what other estimates you are referring to.
Well, your testimony suggests that Dr. Winslow should have compared CEqual evaporation predictions to other evaporation estimates for sites, correct?
Yes.
And so, based upon your understanding of the USR DOM model and how sites used it, by making that comparison, he effectively compared CEqual to other evaporation estimates for sites, correct?
Uh, let me think about that. Uh, he compared it to, he compared the USR DOM and CEqual. I don't recall that he compared them, either of those, to calcium two. Can you point me to, uh, somewhere in the testimony that says that? Or in the record?
But I appreciate your answer. We'll, we'll move on. And Dr. Winslow explains that the USR DOM model uses a prescribed evaporation based on local reservoirs, correct?
Uh, can you repeat just briefly?
Yeah, this is cited in the bottom of, of page two of your testimony, I believe, but you, you quote Dr. Winslow, where he explains that the USR DOM uses a prescribed evaporation based on local reservoirs. Is that correct? So by using USR DOM as a basis for comparison of evaporation with the CEqual model, Dr. Winslow effectively compared CEqual evaporation to other local reservoirs, correct?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
From one, yeah, one data set and one, yeah. He did not compare it to sort of all of the tools he had available, such as calcium, but he did make some comparisons, yes.
And by decreasing precipitation in the CEqual model, Dr. Winslow effectively increased net evaporation in the CEqual model for sites, correct?
Uh, let me give you a moment here. Yes.
Move to page seven of your testimony. And my understanding of paragraph seven is it's, for the most part, a restatement of a paragraph from your case in chief testimony. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Just as I, as I noted in line three there, I, I edited the first sentence because when I wrote this initial testimony, I was not aware of the net evaporation estimates that were in appendix three of the EIS. I'd only searched volume one and volume two, so I just adjusted that one line, but
Okay.
functionally, it's a copy, yeah.
Okay. And so the paragraph describes the two estimates of evaporation that you conducted as part of your case in chief testimony, correct?
Yes.
And for one of those estimates, you relied on evapo concentration for the estimate of evaporation? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is it always true that the average percent increase in concentration due to evaporation is the same as the percent of water that is evaporated from a reservoir?
Um, I don't know that it's always true, and I had never made this type of comparison before. I just was encountering, I had, I had no information that I could find on evaporation. I thought that the Water Board had no information on evaporation, so I was trying to, you know, come up with ideas of how to address it. Perhaps there's some small factor that I'm overlooking that could uh, would make them not identical, but I would think if they're not identical, they should be, they should be very close.
Well, maybe we could look at a hypothetical and you can provide me your opinion as to whether the result is close.
Sure.
Um, if we assume a reservoir fills up essentially all at once in a, in a season and there's no outflow, if you start with a constituent value of 100 and half the water evaporates from the reservoir, what is the evaporation rate in the reservoir?
Um, let me think about that for a minute. My temptation is to say 50, but I need to think about some other things. Uh, I think it's 50 off the top of my head, but I'm kind of, you know, thinking here.
Would there be a change in concentration of that constituent that started out with a value of 100?
Yes.
And what would that change be in concentration?
Um, let's see. We started 100 and half the water goes off into the sky. We're assuming that, we're talking about salt or something, that an appreciable amount of that is not also going to the sky, so I think it would double.
Okay.
So go to, from 100 to 200.
Okay. So at least in that example, um, it wouldn't be appropriate to use changes in evapo concentration for an estimate of evaporation, correct?
Um, let me just think about that. So yeah, I guess right, because it would be a 50% uh, evaporation rate, but the concentration would have, uh, double. Yeah. So, I mean, I don't think it's worth thinking about this too much, because as I stated in my testimony, once I became aware of the ET information that was hucked into appendix three, I'm, I'm not really relying on this, you know, evapo concentration stuff anymore.
Okay. On page eight of your testimony, you identify a um, set of reservoirs, or I guess I should say you identify a criteria for identifying a set of reservoirs.
Yeah.
You include in your comparative analysis.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah.
Okay, great. And the criteria you've selected for the reservoirs that you compare sites to are, one, they're, they're at least 1 million acre feet. Is that correct?
Yeah, approximately. I think I used one that was 995 or something like that, but yeah. Rounding to the nearest percent or so.
Okay. And the second criteria used was readily available data on average inflows. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Just for general reference purposes, would you call your comparative analysis in WCT 60 an evaporative loss efficiency analysis?
I am not familiar with that term, so no, I would not call it that.
Okay.
Would you like me to think about if I think it's an appropriate term to use?
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll let it go. I'll, I'll just use a more words. So do you agree that an analysis that looks at total and net evaporative losses from um, a set of reservoirs, uh, should look at as many reservoirs as possible for which you have data for the variables you use in table one of your testimony?
Um, as a scientist, I would say that more data is always better. Um, but the exact phrasing of your question was, should it use as much data as possible?
Yes.
Um, yeah, I would say, all the things being equal, it should use as much data as possible, and, you know, I had time and budget constraints, and I thought doing it for 11 of the largest reservoirs is not just 10 example reservoirs, but it's, uh, or sorry, not just 11 reservoirs, but it's 11 that have a combined storage of, I think it's 22 million acre feet, which I think is a pretty substantial, um, you know, percent of the total reservoir storage in California. So you could sort of consider it as like a, if you were doing a survey, it'd be a 50% sample, in a way, of the total volume of, of storage, some, you know, some, something like that. If, I, I guess I'm assuming that the total number for the, yeah, maybe it's, it's not 50%, but it, but it's high. I don't know what the total storage reservoirs is in California. My, I was thinking in my head somewhere, I'm like 30 million or, you know, 40 million, something like that, but that's, I shouldn't even say that, because I don't really know that number, so, but
Okay.
I know I got the big ones.
Okay. Are you aware of other reservoirs in California for which your data in table one is readily available?
Um, so what I did practically speaking was I started at the top of the list and started, uh, started working down there, and, um, then I started to run to like, I think when the next reservoir on the list would been Tahoe, which is a natural lake that, you know, the elevation is, uh, regulated somewhat, and I was, uh, I didn't think it really made sense to include natural lakes in here. Uh, so I would have had to start digging into like, looking at each next of the ones on the list and saying, okay, does this fit with the others? Um, there's also manual work of every one of these things. I manually went to the, the NOAA River Forecast Center and clicked on a, looked to see if, you know, it had a prediction there, so I also, uh, I think there were, not every reservoir has, has those things, so it was just taking more and more time. So I kind of liked the, I don't know, you probably heard of the 80/20 rule, where you can get most of the information uh, you need without doing every, every, everything. I think, uh, the analysis that I did, I think, was very, uh, informative, but certainly there's more data that could be done, and if, uh, if you or anyone else wants to do that, I would, I would welcome you to do that.
So I'm just gonna focus on what you were referring to as reservoirs as opposed to natural um, lakes.
Yeah.
My understanding from your response there is that there are other reservoirs, at least in California, that for which the data in table one of your testimony is readily available. Is that correct?
I think so, that the evaporation data is available for any, any reservoir that I think we, I don't know what the exact minimum threshold is on it, but it's, it's fairly small for a minimum threshold. So that data is readily available. It's the inflow data that would be the limiting factor. So I don't, I guess I could say with certainty that there are at least some additional ones for which the inflow is available, but I don't have the names of any of them in my head, and I don't know how many more, but certainly there should be some one.
In paragraph nine of your testimony on pages eight and nine, you describe how you used the global lake evaporation volume data set to calculate monthly evaporation volumes for the reservoirs you selected for your comparison, correct?
Yes, and just because I didn't actually calculate the evaporation volumes, that was a thing that I got. I, as I'd say, I obtained it from that data.
Okay.
The volumes, yeah.
Thanks for that clarification. Is it your understanding that the evaporation volumes you obtained from the, what I'll call the GLEV data set are modeled or calculated volumes? Is that correct?
Yes, and I, I landed on this data set because, uh, it was readily available, easy to access for every lake. I didn't start attempting to do my own data analysis. I started by trying to, surely, surely somebody has written a report where they've compiled all this information for the reservoirs in California. I spent, you know, couple hours looking, and I kind of found bits and pieces here, and so I couldn't really get a apples-to-apples comparison. So that's why I landed on this, uh, this data set, was because it, it was relative and used the same methods, whereas if, I think if I had tried to, you know, mix and match, like, I don't know, reclamation might calculate evaporation for their reservoirs slightly different than the Army Corps does, and slightly different than some water agency does, and then you get into methods comparisons, and so, um, that's why I chose this one.
Okay. Do you agree that measured records for evaporation exist for many, if not all, the reservoirs included in table one of your testimony?
Um, yes, and you know, there's different ways to measure it, so, like I say, I don't think, because you could do things like, you know, they do, there's a pan evaporation measurement, where you set out this big pan that sort of sits there, and you pretend that it's, I mean, it's the same climatic conditions, but it's really a different body of water. It's a, like, sort of its own little tank thing. There's that, or there's mass balances, where you sort of account for all the other variables that are happening uh, in the, in the reservoir, and then you kind of solve for evaporation. Um, there's the best way is to go out in the lake with this really fancy thing called the, um, I think it's eddy, eddy covariance, uh, that's this really sensitive instrument, and measure the water vapor and the fluxes and all that kind of stuff, so, um, I would assume that, yeah, a good number of these reservoirs have measurements of one kind or another. I doubt that there is, you know, the same type of measurement that's comparable for the same time period that's available for all these. That's why I use the model data set.
Even if the reservoirs in your table one use different methodologies to measure evaporation, do you agree that the those measurements would generally be more accurate than the um, gridded data from the GLEV data set?
Um, probably. I, I would be shocked if it made a meaningful, uh, difference in terms of my overall conclusion that evaporation in sites is substantially higher than the overall population of those reservoirs. But I would say, as a general rule, measured data should be more accurate than modeled data, although, as I say, there's differences in methods, there's difference in time periods, and so you, then you get all these kind of adjustments to get things on a, on a common scale, and there's room for error there, too, but, um, yeah.
Did you do any comparisons of the GLEV data to local measurements to validate the modeled data?
Um, I had a hard time really finding that type of information. Like I say, I looked for a report that had, uh, comprehensive, you know, comparisons of all the reservoirs. So your question is, did I do any comparisons? I mean, I looked in my, in my table there, I have, uh, inches per year for each reservoir, and I see that, you know, the calcium two modeled data from sites falls within the range of the 11 reservoirs for the GLEV. I think it was 50, uh, yeah, calcium two for sites is 53 inches per year, and, um, you know, the ones that are I think closest in proximity, um, let me just bring out my testimony on uh, page 15, line 24, I said, "The problem is not that total evaporation depth in sites is higher than the other reservoirs. Indeed, the total evaporation for sites is 53 inches per year, similar to the 53 inches per year in Oroville, 55 inches for Folsom, and 51 inches for Bariessa." So there I'm comparing, uh, the modeled calcium value per site to the GLE values, GLEV values uh, for those other three reservoirs, which are the closest, uh, geographically to where sites is. So that's not a direct comparison to, uh, measured data, but, um, I would invite you to show some evidence that the GLEV, uh, values are, you know, not close to, or that they're not high-quality estimates.
Okay. Well, I, I'm just asking you what you did or didn't do, so I appreciate the suggestion. Um, let's move on to page 11. Um, in paragraph 14 on page 11, and then on in paragraph 17 and 18 on pages 12 and 13, you calculate weighted averages for evaporation and net evaporation, correct?
Yes.
And you compare that to sites statistics?
Yes.
Correct?
Yeah.
Okay. On page 11, at line 15, you state that "The weighted average is the most appropriate comparison for sites because it accounts for each reservoir's importance to the aggregated California water system," correct?
Yes.
Does your weighted average bias the evaporation results towards reservoirs with the greatest amounts of inflow?
Does it bias? Um, I don't know that bias is the right word, but it provides high weight to both reservoirs with high inflow and reservoirs with high, um, evaporation.
Are the, just generally, do you have a sense of whether the reservoirs are with the greatest amounts of inflow in table one are in major river valleys in California?
Yes, they located them where the water is.
Okay. Are you aware of any undammed major rivers, valleys in California where a water supply reservoir could be built?
Uh, I guess that demes- it depends on meaning of the word could. Can you clarify what you mean by that? Like?
Well, from a physical perspective, from a regulatory perspective, do you have any sense?
I mean, it would require, you're saying, is there a major river where we could build a new dam on a river? Um, I think it would require things like changing the Wild and State and Federal Wild and Scenic Rivers Act, but it's not really my area of expertise. Certainly, there are large rivers that do not have dams on them. Whether or not it would be, you know, legal or engineeringally possible to do it, I don't know, conceivably.
On page 11 at 17 and 18, uh, that's line 17 and 18, so the following sentence. Um, you state that the arithmetic average of evaporation treats each reservoir equally without accounting for the differing size of each reservoir's contribution. Right?
All right, let me interject here. Mr. Assyrian, you need to, you need to answer audibly. That was a, that was a head nod. Or if you'd answer audibly, I didn't, I didn't catch it.
I mumbled quietly, uh, yes.
Thank you. Do you agree that there are factors other than reservoir inflow that may make a reservoir attractive to investors from an economic perspective?
Uh, yeah.
And do you agree that sites reservoir is situated in a convenient location for capturing excess runoff and spills?
Uh, S- somewhat convenient, I mean, I guess it would be better if you uh. Didn't have to divert the water off the river, or you didn't have to divert it fifty miles or something, but. Yeah, there's infrastructure, you know, that leads for the most part from the from the river to to the area. So somewhat convenient. I mean, as far as the places that we have left, right, like. Most of the really good places to build reservoirs have have already happened.
So do you agree that the conditions that you just described that? Make sites reservoirs proposed location um convenient um. From an economic and water supply perspective? Do so. Despite what you referred to as high evaporation rates?
Uh can you rephrase the question?
Sure. Or say, do you agree that the convenient, excuse me, do you agree that the conditions that make the site's location um? Um convenient and and um also convenient um. So do you agree that the conditions, I would say, such as location and existing infrastructure that we just discussed? Help make sites reservoir ideal. Um from an economic and water supply perspective despite despite what you refer to as high evaporation?
Uh I wouldn't use the word the word uh ideal.
And what word would you use?
Uh just say this, I had the whole sentence again, please.
Yeah. Do you agree that the conditions that we just discussed, such as um? Being a convenient location for capturing excess runoff and proximate to existing infrastructure? Are conditions that make sites reservoirs location ideal? From an economic and water supply perspective, despite what you refer to as high evaporation?
Um I would say you have to kind of look at the cost and benefits in all kinds of ways, right? Money, materials, environmental impacts, that kind of stuff, so the fact that there's existing infrastructure is in in favor of. Sites being a good location, right? Um the fact that there's high evaporation is not in favor of it being a good location. It is already depends on what our what our goals are and what our values are, right? If diverting that winter water has no, if there's no detrimental. Impacts of it at all, right? If it's just like extra water waste going out to the ocean, who cares? Uh then it doesn't matter if we evaporate ninety percent of it, right? As long as we get ten percent, like, hey, we got more water, that's great, right? Depending on how severe the cost of consuming that. Sorry, got a phone call, gonna shut that off. So if if there's a high high costs to the amount of water that we are would be losing. Through the consumptive use, then you know, that could be important too, so it's a sort of a really a question of. How to weigh all these competing interests and factors.
Well, to put it in your terms of of costs and benefits. Do you agree that the, what I'll call the benefits of the location that we just discussed? Outweigh what you see as a a a cost in the form of evaporation?
Um I mean, I don't think I can really answer that question because I haven't looked at alternative sites to sites. Um I have looked at uh say groundwater recharge in a general sense, not like. Do it exactly here, do it exactly there, doing this exactly this amount, and you know, with recharge, there's essentially. No evaporation or, you know, maybe I don't know what half a percent or something like that um. But you know, how sites would compare to other surface reservoirs that could be constructed, I I really have no idea. I'm assuming that, you know. People are proposing it, right? So it must have some value as a location, but I haven't looked at those. Other other places I haven't looked.
Is it your understanding that the sites investors are evaluating? The economics of the project, at least in part based on average deliveries?
I, yeah, I'm gonna object in terms of this seems to be going on to the edge of the beyond the. Boundaries of the rebuttal testimony.
I I tend to agree, and this is a rare in instance where I'll. I'll entertain a response, Mr. Ferguson, is there a a portion of the rebuttal testimony that you're specifically trying to tie this line of questioning to?
Well, he, uh Mr. Serian, excuse me, has. Made a statement about um. The arithmetic average treating each reservoir equally without accounting for the different size of each reservoir's contribution. And I was just trying to um. And by that, I mean, I understand to say that um. You know, there could be attributes of certain reservoirs um that the. There there could be, there could be attributes of these. He's making a point about the attributes of these various reservoirs and their importance on an individual basis through that statement in my mind, and I'm trying to. Uh probe him on the individual attributes of sites.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sustain the objection. I don't, I don't think we need to be getting into the. Individual economic attributes of various reservoirs based on this rebuttal testimony.
On pages fifteen and sixteen, Mr. Assyrian, you discuss residence time, correct?
Yes.
Do you agree that long residence time may be needed to retain runoff? Collected during wet years for use during dry years?
If there is a need to store water from wet years into dry years in a surface reservoir. That surface reservoir, yeah, will have to have uh long hydraulic retention time to work well.
Do you agree that many of the eleven reservoirs in table one of your testimony? Are operated annually? With limited ability to meet full downstream demands in multiple dry years?
Uh that's not something that I've. Looked at specifically, but uh I know, for example, from looking at uh. Like uh my figure two on page seventeen, which which calculates the ratio between. How large the max volume of the reservoir is and what the average annual inflow is there? Sites is on the highest end, it's got a five point four ratio, it's five point four times bigger than the average annual flow, whereas a lot of the. Everyone other than Bariessa is in the one, is in the what? Around the one to two range, natural range is point point four to two point one, but. Yeah, so sites is kind of size larger relative to its inflow than the others, so your your question was. Do the other ones have? Are they?
I apologize, I I couldn't understand what you said, you said so sites. And then after that. Is it one one to two range, natural range is point four to two point one and?
Oh, uh so sites is on the the upper range for that is higher than in sites is higher than any of the others for that ratio. The sites ratio is five point four. For the other eleven or. For the other, most of the other reservoirs, it ranges from point four to two point one. Except the Bariessa, which is four point three.
Do you agree that the sites ratio of maximum volume to surface inflow? Is ideal for a reservoir that's intended to capture um. Excess flows when they exist for use during dry times in in other years?
Uh again, I think I I'm gonna object, again, I think that kind of goes beyond the scope of. The testimony as opposed to, this testimony is about. Evaporation, not.
Yeah, overrode.
Offering, okay. Uh ask a question again, please.
Does sites ratio of maximum volume to surface inflow, which you're showing in figure two of your testimony? Make sites. I would say more capable of achieving its objective of capturing. Excess flows when they exist for deliveries in future dry years.
I I I I guess so, I mean, because. This ratio is about the long term average, right? So really what sites is doing is it's taking. Little to no water in the low flow years, and then it's taking more water in in the higher flow years, so. Yeah, I think if you were, you know, wanting to design a reservoir. A surface water reservoir to store, you would, yeah, you would, you would need to size at large. Relative to the water you would get in an average year, yeah. And that means you're gonna have evaporation, like there's not really way around that, you're holding water for multiple years.
Can you explain why you used evaporation to total inflow as the metric to compare sites? Uh reservoir to other reservoirs in your testimony? In other words, are there other metrics you could have used to assess? Evaporative losses from these reservoirs?
Uh theoretically outflow. Uh but then you're. Then you're kind of, then the evaporation is already lost and you have to add it back in um. So ask the question again.
Well, I'm asking you why you chose to use evaporation as compared to total inflow as the metric to compare. Sites reservoir to other reservoirs in your testimony?
Yes, um. Yeah, from kind of a simple water management perspective, right, like we have a. A piece of infrastructure or a project, right, where water comes in and then. Later at some time, we store the water, right? And then at some later time, we get some water out, and so this metric says, well, how much do we lose from evaporation? How much do we get out, essentially, like what is the loss due to evaporation, so to me? Evaporation as a percent of inflow made. A lot of sense for, yeah, comparing between reservoirs, comparing surface water reservoir to groundwater recharge. I I don't know, do you have a suggestion for a a a better or a different metric, wanting to entertain that? As a scientist, I'm always a good way to look at stuff, you know?
Well, I previously, I I think you previously testified that the other reservoirs in table one are um. Generally on stream reservoirs, correct?
Yes.
And do you agree that for these reservoirs, a portion of the inflow to the reservoir is generally? Uh not controlled or it's stored and immediately bypassed?
Yes.
Okay. And that's particularly true for the reservoirs with the maximum volume to surface inflow. Uh ratio of one or less, correct?
Say it again, the whole thing.
Well, you. I I believe you just answered for the reservoirs in table one. That a portion of the inflow to each of the reservoirs is not controlled. Or stored and immediately bypassed, is that correct?
Uh yeah, at least that at some times, you know.
Yeah, I I okay.
But yeah.
And as a follow up, I'm asking you, isn't that answer you just gave particularly true for those reservoirs? With the maximum volume to surface inflow ratio of one or less?
I would say that the lower the ratio is. All other things being equal, the more frequently that would happen, but I think it would depend a lot on. The operation of the reservoir and. How, you know, how it's how it's used.
So would you agree that it's somewhat of an apples? To oranges comparison to compare an off stream reservoir such as sites? Which will essentially store all the inflow it receives. To the on stream reservoirs, which store varying portions of the inflow they receive?
I wouldn't say it's apples to oranges, I'd say it's like oranges to grapefruits um like. There are some some differences, they're not totally different, if I if I had data on like. Okay, what is the uncontrolled spill for those reservoirs? Sure, we could deduct that and recalculate things, I I doubt it would change the overall conclusion. I mean, usually reservoirs are, reservoirs were sized for a reason. So.
Do you think one way to? Address these issues that we're discussing uh would be to evaluate. Net evaporation as compared to changes in storage in these reservoirs?
There might be some. Way to figure that out, but you have to kind of. I think that's a com- complicated question with a complicated answer, and we probably did talk about it for a few hours.
I don't think Mr. Vivins will appreciate us talking about it for a few hours, so. Or maybe he would, uh that that's all the questions I have today, Mr. Assyrian, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson, Mr. Mooney, do you have redirect for Mr. Assyrian?
No, I don't have any redirect.
Very good, then uh Mr. Assyrian, you are excused, thank you for your time and your testimony today.
Thank you.
All right, I think we were going to take a fifteen minute break while the authority um. Considers this change in witness order and what they can do with um Dr. Brunner. So let's do that, we will come back at two oh five, we're off the record, thank you.
Thank you.
This is the court reporter, I'm ready when you are.
Very good, let's go back on the record to five. Mr. Hitchens, I saw your email to the service list in the AHO, we'll get to that in a moment. I also see Mr. Marston has appeared on the screen. So, Mr. Mooney, are you here?
I am here, I will be presenting Mr. Marston.
Very good, and is Mr. Marston ready to go now?
So, I was wanting to ask the Sites Project Authority how long they expect the cross-examination to be. He does have a hard stop at 2:50 today. He can do a quick summary, he said about five minutes and then I know you gave the estimate of thirty to forty-five minutes for a cross-examination. Or if there's another accommodation that would work better, if you would prefer to go with Mr. Bruner is available also.
Go ahead.
Well, if we go with Dr. Bruner, it sounds like then Mr. Marston would not be available at all today, is that right?
He will have limited availability, he has a last-minute meeting that came up from three to four and then will have to be offline at 4:30.
Well, I think we can complete our cross-examination of him within thirty to forty minutes and that would be before his hard stop, assuming that there's not a very lengthy summary of his eight-page rebuttal testimony.
I think it'll take me about, honestly, five minutes to do the summary. I apologize, I had set aside the afternoon, but when the governor's office wants to schedule a call regarding current litigation, I gotta take it, so I have this hard stop at 2:50. That call could be done as quickly as thirty minutes, I've allocated an hour for it. I would have a window of opportunity to go from when that call ends to 4:30 today. And I am available anytime on Monday.
Well, I'm, I'm ready to start, Mr. Bivins, with Mr. Marston, I just need to run and get my outline off the printer, just a few steps away.
All right, why don't you do that and then we will start with Mr. Marston, go ahead, Mr. Hitchens. And I will remind Mr. Marston, previous witness, he remains under oath and is testifying under penalty of perjury. And with that, I will turn it over to you, Ms. Willey, to present Mr. Marston.
Thank you, and nice to meet you, Officer Bivins, I'm Cassel Willie, I'm the staff attorney for South California Salmon. Mr. Marston, would you please state your name for the record?
Lester John Marston.
And is Exhibit SES-11 an accurate statement of your written testimony?
Yes.
And did you prepare that testimony?
As I recall, I did.
And is Exhibit SES-2 an accurate statement of your qualifications and curriculum fee type?
Yes, there's a lot more qualifications that aren't on the resume, but yes, everything in that resume is accurate.
And is Exhibit SES-29, which was submitted with your written testimony, incited there in a true and correct copy of that documentation?
Yes.
And do you have any corrections for your submitted documents?
Yes, what I'd like to do is, in the second attachment, there's a typographical error. It refers to the tribes, the band's name as Win-Tu, spelled W-I-N-T-U, and it should be W-I-N-T-U-N, that's on paragraph twelve on page four.
Thank you, we have noted that and we will submit the corrected testimony to the FTP site along with the updated index. At this time, you may proceed with a summary of your testimony.
Thank you. Indian tribes have a federally reserved water right. That water right arises out of federal common law and the United States Supreme Court's decision in the winner's case. And what the United States Supreme Court has said is that when a reservation is created, there is enough water reserved for the reservation at the time of creation of the reservation to fulfill the purposes for which the reservation was created. Now, since the winner's decision, there's been a lot of litigation over, you know, what are the purposes for which the reservation was created? But there, the case law is well-settled that one of the purposes for which the reservation was created was to create a homeland for the Indians. And that would include enough water to irrigate practical, irrigable acreage on the reservation, to maintain a fishery, to maintain residential development, and to allow the tribes to pursue economic development and commercial activities. The tribes have a priority date, and that priority date is the date that the reservation was created. Here in California, Congress enacted the eighteen-fifth, March first, eighteen fifty-three statute. And that statute reserved out of the public domain any lands under the exclusive occupancy of an Indian tribe as of that date. So that if a tribe was occupying lands on March first, eighteen fifty-three, and continued to occupy those lands, and then a reservation was created either by congressional enactment or secretarial order or executive order that included those same lands, the Indian tribe would have a priority date of March first, eighteen fifty-three. If not, then it would be the date that the actual congressional statute, presidential executive order, or secretarial order, or purchased by the United States government creating the reservation, that date would be the priority date. Here in California, there are very few persons, organizations, or entities that have a priority date that is earlier than the Indian tribes. Along the Sacramento River, there are lands that have been set aside for Indians, and a good example is the Calusa Indian Rancheria. And that rancheria, and I have physically inspected and walked the, one of their boundaries of their rancheria, the boundary that borders upon, and in my opinion includes a portion of the Sacramento River. So, they, the tribe, in all likelihood, and the only reason that I am hesitating is because there haven't been any studies done regarding Calusa's reserved water rights. But it's pretty clear that a portion of the Sacramento flows within the boundaries of the reservation and that the groundwaters that lie beneath the reservation are probably hydrologically connected to the Sacramento River. Therefore, any upstream diversions and the, and the proposed application for diversion is upstream from Calusa, for example. Any upstream diversions of water out of the Sacramento River that would divert waters away from the reservation, which would cause any type of hydrological harm to the tribe's groundwaters, the tribe would have a right to go into federal court and join that diversion. The problem with the application in this case is that no one ever consulted with it, and I'll just give one example again, there's other tribes, but no one consulted with the Calusa Indian community. No one has undertaken the studies necessary to determine the extent of their reserved water right. So, there's never been any groundwater management study done, there's never been any watershed management study done. There's never any studies done to determine whether or not there's a hydrological connection between the Sacramento River and the groundwater basins lying beneath the Calusa Indian Reservation. And therefore, the decision-maker in this case that has to make a decision as to whether or not to issue a permit to allow these diversions has absolutely no idea what environmental impact that will have on the tribe's reserved water right. And you could have a situation, it's a hypothetical.
Excuse me, Mr., I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Marston, but we've been going almost ten minutes now and I'm very concerned about having time to cross.
If you give me a little more time, don't interrupt me, I'll wrap it up.
Well, hang on, hang on, Mr. Marston, you've got two more minutes to wrap it up and then I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Hitchens for cross.
So, there's been no studies done, so the decision-maker in this case has no idea what the environmental impacts are gonna be on that reserved water right, and theoretically, the tribe could bring a general stream adjudication in federal court to determine everybody's rights to the waters in the Sacramento River, and that could very well result in a decree being entered by the federal court that holds that sites has no right to divert water out of the Sacramento River. That concludes my summary.
All right, Mr. Hitchens, your witness.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bivins, and hello, Mr. Marston. My name is Andrew Hitchens and I represent the Sites Project Authority in this proceeding. Thank you for being here today to answer our questions about your rebuttal testimony. Just to start out, Mr. Marston, you don't hold any formal advanced degrees in hydrology, hydrogeology, or water resources engineering, correct?
No, just forty-seven years of litigating general stream adjudication and Indian reserved water rights, including representing the Chimwai Indian Tribe in a little case called California, Arizona versus California since nineteen seventy-seven, and the general stream adjudication of the Santa Margarita River, or what's commonly referred to as the Fall Book Case out of San Diego County, and numerous other representations of other.
Excuse me, Mr. Bivins, I have a specific question out of advance.
Mr. Hitchens, hang on, Mr. Marston, you're gonna, especially given the limitations in time we have, you're gonna need to confine yourself to answering Mr. Hitchens' question without oral commentary, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marston, Ms. Mullen, could you please bring up Mr. Marston's testimony at SES-11? And scroll to page seven. And maybe scroll down so you are at the unadjudicated water rates at the top. So, Mr. Marston, paragraphs twenty-four through twenty-six of your testimony do not specify any previously submitted testimony that is being rebutted by the content in those paragraphs, correct?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, we're in the rebuttal phase of this proceeding and my question is, in those three paragraphs, they do not specify any previously submitted testimony that is being rebutted by the content in those paragraphs, correct?
Yeah, again, I, I don't understand your question.
Okay, I'll move on.
There's three paragraphs here, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, they speak for themselves. And what?
I can move on, Mr. Bivins.
Let's, let's move on. Go ahead, Mr. Hitchens.
Marston, Exhibit Sites 112 is the only previously submitted testimony by the Sites Authority that is referenced in your rebuttal testimony, correct?
If you could pull up the document so I could take a look at it, I'd be able to answer your question.
Okay, the document's pulled up. And my understanding is that's the only sites testimony that was previously submitted that is referenced in your rebuttal testimony, so do you, do you know whether that's the case or not?
Again, the exhibit you have on the screen is my testimony.
Let's go to page three, line twenty-one of Mr. Marston's testimony. So here, Mr. Marston, you refer to the testimony from the authority's expert on groundwater, Sites 112, do you see that?
I do.
And so that Sites 112 testimony is the only previously submitted testimony that is referenced in your previously submitted testimony by Sites that's referenced in your rebuttal testimony, correct?
Again, I haven't looked at Sites 112 in probably over a month. So, if you can put the document up on the screen, I could review.
No, 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 hang on, Mr. Marston, that's not, that's not what Mr. Hitchens is asking you, so I'm, I'm going to ask you. In your rebuttal testimony, have you referred to any exhibits submitted by the Sites Project Authority other than Sites 112?
No.
Thank you.
That was a concise question, that was.
Carry on, Mr. Hitchens.
Okay, and, Mr. Marston, which sites witness prepared Sites 112?
I don't recall.
Do you, would you refresh your recollection if it was Dr. Jeffrey Davids?
I don't recall, I reviewed that, the Sites 112, as I said, well over a month ago, and I, I can't keep that information in my head.
Okay, did you review Dr. Davids' previous verbal testimony in this proceeding prior to submitting your rebuttal testimony?
I did.
Okay, you cite, you specifically referenced Sites 112 a total of four times in your testimony, correct?
I'd have to go, I'd have to read through my testimony and look and count them.
Okay, well, let's do that right now, we can do that quickly, too. So, the first place you reference 112 is here at page three, line twenty-one. And there you assert that the written testimony did not mention tribal interests, tribal lands, or tribal cultural resources, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then the second time you reference Sites 112, if we could scroll to page five, line fifteen.
I'm there.
And there you assert that the analysis in the testimony made predictions but did not provide affirmative conclusions about how the change in surface water conditions from the project might alter groundwater, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and if we could go to page six, line twenty-one. Thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Mullen. So, this is the third time you reference Sites, and there you assert that the testimony does not analyze impacts to tribal groundwater resources, correct?
Correct.
And if we scroll down to line twenty-six on this same page, this is the fourth and last time you reference 112. And when citing there to Sites 112, specifically page thirteen of it, you assert that the testimony indicates that it is possible that the Keshal Dehe Band's groundwater will be negatively impacted due to decreased recharge caused by the project, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Marston, do you agree that Dr. Davids' testimony in Sites 112 focuses on characterizing potential impacts from the Sites Project on groundwater recharge in the Calusa Subbasin?
No, I disagree with that.
All right, if we could pull up Sites 112 and scroll to page two. And if we could go to paragraph four. So, the first sentence of paragraph four says, "My testimony focuses on characterizing potential impacts from the Site Reservoir Project on groundwater recharge in the Calusa Subbasin." Do you see where it says that?
Well, I see part of it, paragraph four goes on to the next page.
Okay, we can scroll down to the rest of that text then. It just says which covers a area, area of approximately seventy, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-three acres. So, do you, do you agree that Dr. Davids, as he characterizes his testimony, is that it focuses on characterizing potential impacts from the reservoir project on groundwater recharge in the Calusa Subbasin?
I would agree that he has offered statements in his declaration regarding recharges to the groundwaters within the Calusa Subbasin.
Okay, thank you. And then, do you agree that the Calusa Rancheria lands referenced in your testimony are all within the Calusa Subbasin boundary?
They are.
And do you agree that the Cortina Rancheria lands referenced in your testimony are partially to the west of and partially within the Calusa Subbasin boundary?
They are.
Do you have any understanding whether the Cortina Rancheria lands are located up gradient relevant to the Calusa Subbasin?
I do not.
Assuming these lands are up gradient relative to the basin, that would lessen the chance that they could be adversely impacted by the Sites Project's impacts on groundwater recharge, correct?
That would be, cause speculation, the one thing that I have learned is the mere fact that something appears to be on the surface up gradient doesn't mean that there's not a hydrological connection between groundwater and a river source.
Okay, thank you. We don't want you to speculate. Mr. Marston, did you review Dr. Davids' description of his Sacramento River recharge analysis in Sites 112 at pages fourteen to fifteen?
I did at the time that I prepared my testimony in this case.
Okay, if we could scroll to the bottom of page fourteen of Sites 112. In summarizing that analysis in paragraph thirty, Dr. Davids states, and I'm just gonna read this, "Considering the maximum simulated decrease in seepage of approximately six acre-feet per day and a diversion period of two hundred and eighty-seven days per year, the estimated decrease in recharge from the Sacramento River," if we could continue to scroll down, "due to increased diversions to the TC Canal and GCID Main Canal is approximately seventeen hundred acre-feet per year. In my professional opinion, this estimated decrease in recharge is highly conservative because, one, it assumes the maximum model seepage reductions persists throughout the entire proposed diversion period, and, two, the simulated decrease in seepage is calculated for the entire Sacramento River channel along the sub-basin boundary, while in reality the sub-basin only borders one side of the Sacramento River, i.e. impacts from reduced seepage would likely be split between the sub-basins on both sides of the river." You have not cited to or provided any quantitative analysis that rebuts those estimates, correct?
I haven't provided any quantitative analysis, and, and let me explain. Because the whole thrust of my testimony is that Dr. Davids' analysis and his conclusions are not reliable. And the reason that they're not reliable is because he doesn't have the information necessary to draw accurate conclusions. So.
Mr. Bivins, I'll move to strike, I just asked whether he cited to or, or referenced or provided, and the answer was no.
No, that was not my answer.
Stop, Mr. Marston, the objection is sustained, we'll strike everything after no. Let's move on.
No, but my answer is yes. My testimony is that the information necessary to make the very types of, reach the very types.
Mr. Marston, Mr. Marston, we're, we're, we're not gonna do this. If your attorney wants to clean up your testimony on redirect, you'll have an opportunity to explain further, but you need to confine yourself to answering Mr. You'll have an opportunity to explain further, but you need to confine yourself to answering Mr. Hitchens' question.
So my answer to his question is yes.
Okay, what specific quantitative analysis rebuts those estimates that you cited to or provided?
The, the, the quantitative analysis is the fact. That no groundwater management studies or watershed studies have been conducted. To obtain the information necessary. For Dr. Davies to draw the conclusions in this paragraph that he drew.
But you can't specify any particular quantitative analysis, correct?
No, but that's because the studies haven't been done to be able to do that.
Okay, I'll move on. Did any of the protestants provide any quantitative analysis that rebuts those estimates?
Not to my knowledge.
And if we could scroll to page eighteen. Uh, Mr. Marston, did you review Dr. David's description of his Funks and Stone Corral Creeks recharge analysis? In sites one twelve at pages fifteen through eighteen?
Again, at the time that I prepared my testimony, yes.
Okay, if we could look at pay at paragraph thirty-seven on. Eighteen, Dr. David states. Combining these two periods in spatial reaches, I estimated that the reduced seepage, i.e. decrease in recharge. From Funks and Stone Corral Creeks due to changes in runoff post-sites reservoir would be between zero and approximately. One thousand forty acre feet. Uh, again, you have not cited to or provided any quantitative analysis that rebuts those estimates, correct?
That's correct.
And did any of the protestants provide any quantitative analysis that rebuts those estimates?
Uh, I have no knowledge as to whether they did or not.
Thank you. And Mr. Marston, did you review Dr. David's final summary conclusions regarding the potential groundwater impacts? To the Kaluza sub-basin. Uh, at pages nineteen to twenty. Uh, paragraphs forty-one to forty-two.
Again, at the time that I prepared my testimony, I, I did.
Okay, Ms. Mullin, if we could scroll to, uh, page twenty, paragraph forty-two. Here on page twenty, line twelve. It says, it's important to note that the potential increase in recharge is one order of magnitude, i.e. ten times greater. I.e. twenty-five thousand acre feet a year, then the potential decrease in recharge, i.e. Twenty-four hundred acre feet per year compared to the annual, uh, average annual recharge, i.e. Deep percolation estimates included in the GSP. Of four hundred and sixteen thousand acre feet per year. These represented an approximately. Point six percent potential decrease in recharge to the basin. To an approximately six percent potential increase in recharge to the sub-basin. You have not cited to any. Or provided any quantitative analysis that rebuts. Dr. David's conclusions set forth in those paragraphs, correct?
No, other than as I stated. I don't know how he can render a decision about the sub-basins. Without having the quantitative studies necessary. To determine the boundaries of the sub-basins, the depths of the some basins, the types of soils and rock formations in those basins. And without undertaking additional studies regarding specifically Indian tribes and their reservations. And what the extent and nature are, are the base groundwater basins that lie beneath those reservations.
Mr. Bivens, I'd move to strike everything after the answer no.
Sustained.
Mr. Marston, did any of the protestants provide, any other protestants provide any quantitative analysis that rebuts? Dr. David's conclusions set forth in paragraphs forty-one and forty-two?
I, I have no knowledge of that to be able to answer that.
Your rebuttal testimony cites to AHO seventy-five, zero seven five, which is chapter eight. Of the project finally IR regarding potential impacts to groundwater resources, correct?
Uh, what page is that on?
Uh, well, where I saw it in your testimony, it was at SCS eleven, pages three, five, and six.
Okay.
And Ms., Ms. Mullin, if you could actually pull up, um, AHO seventy-five. Page one. And the last two sentences of the first paragraph. On this page, they state as follows. The study area for groundwater resources consists of the groundwater basins and sub-basins. Uh, that could be directly affected by construction and operation of the project facilities. Tables eight dash one A and eight dash one B summarize the SEQA determinations. And NEPA conclusions for construction and operation impacts respectively between alternatives. And if we could scroll down to table eight dash one A to see that. Thank you. As summarized in this table. Regarding the project's potential construction impacts to groundwater resources. Those impacts were determined to be less than significant under SEQA, correct?
The document speaks for itself.
Do you, do you agree that the document sets forth, uh, the summary of those determinations?
Based on the information that was available to it, yes.
And then scrolling to the next page, um. As summarized in table eight, one B regarding the project's potential operations. Impacts to groundwater resources. Those impacts were also determined to be less than significant under SEQA, correct?
Again, the document speaks for itself.
And have, you have not cited to or provided any quantitative analysis that rebuts those. Less than significant impact determinations, correct?
That is correct to the extent that based on my testimony, there's not, there was no study. The types of studies were not done that were necessary to be able to provide accurate information in the environmental impact report.
Uh, again, I'd move to strike everything after no.
Sustained.
Did any of the protestants provide any quantitative analysis that rebuts those less than significant impact determinations?
I have no knowledge as to what the other participants have submitted.
Uh, Mr. Marston, have you reviewed Mr. Walker's testimony for sites regarding the water availability analysis? Submitted for the application and petitions in this proceeding?
Yes, I read it at the time I prepared my testimony.
Are you aware that the face value analysis performed for the WAA? Analyze the face value demand of all the reported water rights? In the Sacramento River watershed and the delta, including all of the reported water rights held by the Cashel Dee Hee Band?
Uh, as I sit here today, I don't remember that, no.
Are you aware that the historical analysis performed for the WAA? Also use the face value demand of all reported downstream. Water rights in the Sacramento River watershed and the delta, including all of the reported water rights of the Cashel Dee Hee Band?
Again, I reviewed that. At the time I prepared my testimony. The hearing officer can look at the date of submission of that testimony. As I sit here today, I don't remember what's contained, all the specific information in that. Uh, document, the document speaks for itself, so I don't recall.
Mr. Marston, are you aware of the AHO's January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five procedural ruling in this matter that requested? Supplemental information from all parties claiming a risk of injury to water rights from approval of the sites project?
Yes, I believe I am.
Are you aware that the Cashel Dee Hee Band is the only tribal party that submitted water rights information in response to that request?
Yes, I believe I'm aware of that.
And Mr. Marston, you referenced the Kletzel Dee Hee Winton Nation. Cortina Indian Rancheria twice in your testimony, correct?
Uh, I, I'd have to sit down and go through my testimony, but I remember that I referenced them. Yes, I just can't recall how many times.
Are you aware that the, the Kesh, Kletzel Dee Hee tribe did not file a notice of intent to appear in this proceeding, and they are not parties?
I wasn't aware of that, no.
Are you aware that the sites authority included? The Cortina Rancheria lands within its requested place of use, so they could potentially receive water supplies from the project in the future?
I believe I'm aware of that, yes.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Marston. Um, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Mr. Hitchens. Um, are there any questions from, uh, the Department of Water Resources for Mr. Marston? Are there any questions from the state water contractors for Mr. Marston?
I do not have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mandel Rice. Uh, Ms. Mitchell, do you have any questions for Mr. Marston?
I do not have questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Marston, I have one, maybe two questions for you, um, briefly. Um, you mentioned in your, in your summary of testimony. Uh, the, the possibility of there being a Federal Reserve right for, uh. Fishing purposes. Is, is that a fair characterization of your summary?
That is a, uh, the, the, yes.
And, um, and I think you had referred to, um. Ninth Circuit cases on that, on that point, um, is, is Colville Confederated Tribes v. Walton. Uh, the leading case on the creation of a Federal Reserve right for fishing?
Well. Y- y- no, there's been subsequent cases. That have, um. Clar, uh, provided fair, fa- further clarification of the rights of Indian tribes, um. To have a reserved wa- wa- water right to maintain their fishery. If they have a fishery on the reservation.
And if I wanted to, um. Investigate that, that issue, what cases would you recommend that I look at?
I would recommend that you read Felix Cohen's Handbook of Federal Indian Law, the section on Indian, reserved Indian water rights. It'll give you the, 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 the new twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five edition. It'll give you a nice summary of all of the current relevant cases.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Marston. Um, Ms. Willie, do you have a redirect for Mr. Marston?
Yes, I do. I have a few questions. Which I will try to get through quickly.
Please proceed.
Um, okay. So you were asked, um, on several. Different occasions, um, in. The cross-examination about whether or not you provided quantitative analysis yourself in your testimony for, um. Various, um. For various aspects regard, regarding the groundwater testimony from the sites witness, um. Why was it that you did not provide a quantitative analysis?
Well, as your opposing, opposing counsel, uh, pointed out, I'm not, I'm not a hydrologist. Right? And it's not. Uh, and I don't represent any of the tribes. That, uh, border upon or whose groundwater may be hydrologically connected to the Sacramento River. Whether it's upstream or downstream from the sites diversion point. The, 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 the purpose of my testimony is to let the decision maker in this case know. That they don't have the information necessary, in my opinion, to make the decision. You, you, you can't. Uh, say that there's not gonna be any environmental impacts. Unl- unless or until you have determined. What the nature is of the environment. That could be impacted. In this case, the tribes. S- right, reserved right. To surface in groundwaters that lie, that flow through. Flow across and lie beneath their reservations. Um. The, Dr. Davies' analysis could very well be correct, but it could very well be incorrect. And the, the problem with this case is. He doesn't know, and they don't know because they don't have the information.
Thank you. Uh, and if we could pull up Mr. Marston's testimony again, uh, SCS eleven. And go to, um, paragraph four on page two, please. And so this, um, paragraph four says that the issues addressed in this testimony are meant to address the lack of information that was provided. Uh, in the authority's case in chief testimony, is that correct?
Yes.
And is that statement meant to apply to the entire entirety of your testimony?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, and also to make sure that they, uh, that the decision maker understands. That. That there's an Indian reservation there. And the law is absolutely clear. They have a right to divert waters out of the Sacramento River, River. To, um. Um, maintain their groundwater basins that lie within. That river. I mean, uh, that lie with, beneath the reservation. And, uh, there, it's also a fact that. Kaluza, for example, has not sought to exercise that reserved water right. And they have a priority to that water. That, in my opinion, and, and we could look at all the individuals who are parties to the case. That is superior to anyone else. So that's number one, approval of the permit. If the tribe undertakes the studies necessary, they can show that there's a hydrological connection between the Sacramento River and their groundwater basins. And the diversion is causing an impact to their groundwater basins. They have the right to go into federal court and join the diversions. The second thing is because.
Mr. Bivens, I, I'm gonna object that this is. I've been, um, patient here, but I believe this is going outside the scope of my cross quite a bit.
I think that's fair, sustained. Let's move on, Ms. Willie.
Okay, um. I think that's the extent of my, my redirect.
Thank you. Mr. Hitchens, do you have any recross within the scope of that limited redirect?
I do not. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Marston, thank you for your testimony and your time. You are excused.
Thank you so much. You have a wonderful day.
You too. All right, we need to, uh. Return to the, to the scheduling issue, um. Mr. Hitchens, I know we, we had a little bit of an interlude there for Mr. Marston. Is your team ready to proceed with Dr. Brunner?
Yes, we are. Thank you, and I'm, I'm glad that we were able to stick with the. Earlier order that was noticed to us.
Yes, um, and I. I will say, I, 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 I think it's a little problematic to be making such late. Changes to the order of, um, testimony, and that's, you know, goes for, for all parties. I mean, it's hard to. Hard to prepare, um, if you don't know who's gonna come up when, so I will just, um, ask the Protestants to the extent there are, um. Further changes in the order of witnesses that, um, the parties at least be notified as soon as practicable.
Well, let me, this is, this is Don Mooney. Um, we did receive notice today that. Uh, Ms. Marino, who we have scheduled, we were hoping to go tomorrow. Um, has some medical issues and prob, and at this point in time, we're not counting on her being available.
Let me, thank you for that testimony. Let me look back at my. Order here, so we're, we've done Mr. Sarian, Mr. Marston, we're going to move to Dr. Brunner. And potentially Dr. Smallwood. Um. Mr. Buckley will be tomorrow, so where would you like to slot Ms. Marino?
I, well, I think at this point in time, because, I mean, this, it would probably have to be. On the, possibly on the tenth, then. um, if she's not available tomorrow. We just, so, some of this, you know, and I apologize for the confusion today. We're just, to some extent, the, the, we're just kind of reacting to some things that are happening in kind of real time and-
Yeah, I, I am not assuming bad faith, Mr. Mooney.
And, okay, and, and, uh, and, and we can, I think we can have Mr. Smallwood available. It's a little, everything's kind of gotten a little expedited. We thought it, he would be tomorrow morning. Um, it, but if, it, it's, uh, Mr. Hitchens' email with regards to today, thinking that they would be able to get through Mr. Smallwood today. So if that's still the case, I will let him know and, um, and so he's available following, uh, uh, Dr. Brunner.
All right, Mr. Hitchens.
Yes, uh, thank you. I, actually, I, I felt that we could probably get through Dr. Smallwood's direct today. After the two witnesses before him, Mr. Marston being done now. Um, I don't believe I'll be able to get through a full cross of him, my full cross today, so. Um, and I, I would suggest something else, that if Ms. Moreno is not going to be available until Monday at the earliest, we had actually assumed that Dr. Rosenfield would not go till Monday as well, given the order and cross estimates. And so if we wanted to make that Monday, you know, I, cause I think we will get through everybody else prior to Ms. Moreno and Dr. Rosenfield by the end of the day tomorrow, that we assume that maybe that would be the Monday schedule.
Well-
That made sense.
Yeah, on a scheduling matter, I would note that, uh, the, uh, Mr. Easter, Mr. Schutz and, and, uh, Mr. Rosenfeld, none of them are available on the sixth. They are on next, this week. And that was the day that was kind of got added towards the end, and some people had made some previous commitments, um, on those days and just kind of the way the schedules played out. So our hope was tomorrow to have, our original hope was tomorrow to have Dr. Smallwood, Dr. Buckley, Ms. Marino, um, go tomorrow. Um, but, um, some of that's, like, again, we're just kind of reacting to some things that are happening, but some of them were, um, the, for the three folks that we thought, the three last witnesses, Easter, Schutz and Rosenfeld, um, uh, were not available on the sixth, and so they would be on the tenth.
Um, okay, let me look at my calendar. So, sorry, I gotta move things around on screen. So it sounds like we're gonna, we're gonna do Dr. Brunner today, possibly Mr. Small, or Dr. Smallwood's redirect, or I'm sorry, direct testimony. Pick up with his cross-examination, um, tomorrow morning, move to Buckley's direct and cross tomorrow. And then the last four witnesses, Easter, Schutz, Rosenfield and Marino are not going to be available until Monday?
So on Marino, we, we, there is a possibility she might be available tomorrow, but we don't know that at this moment. We, all we know is that there's a medical issue and she's informed us. And we don't, one, we don't know any more than that. And two, if we did, we're trying to respect her privacy on, with regards to a medical issue. Um, so, uh, i- if we learn any more during the course of the day or the evening, um, I'm, I'm happy to send out a notice to, you know, a, a, an email saying that she would be available tomorrow. But as of this point in time, I think we should kind of plan that she's not.
Okay, well, let's see where we, uh, let's see where we get. I appreciate the, the heads, as much of a heads up as you can provide, Mr. Mooney, and, and I understand, you know, that's that's all you can do. And I also want to respect Ms. Marino's privacy. Um, with that, let's bring up Dr. Brunner for you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Let me, I believe, you have not testified in this proceeding yet, have you, Dr. Brunner?
That is correct.
Okay, let's, we need to administer an oath, and then I will turn it back over to Mr. Mooney. So, um, Dr. Brunner, do you swear affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you will give in this hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Mooney, uh, please go ahead and introduce your witness. Ask them to affirm that they're written, or I'm sorry, Ms. Willie, I'm sorry. Uh, please go ahead and introduce your witness. Um, ask her to affirm that her written rebuttal testimony is true and correct, and refer to that exhibit number for their written testimony, and then we can proceed.
Thank you. Um, good afternoon. Uh, would you please state your name for the record?
Sure. It's Elizabeth Anne Brunner.
And is, uh, exhibit F O R three zero four a true and accurate statement of your written testimony?
It is.
And did you prepare that written testimony?
I did.
And is exhibit F O R three zero five an accurate summary presentation of that written testimony?
It is.
And did you prepare that summary presentation?
I did.
Is exhibit F O R three zero three an accurate entry statement of your qualifications and curriculum vitae?
It is.
And are exhibits, uh, F O R three zero six and three zero seven, which were submitted with your written testimony and cited therein a true and correct copy of those documents?
Yes, they are.
And at this time, can we please bring up F O R three zero five, and you may proceed with your summary of your testimony?
Thank you, Ms. Willie. Uh, thank you for allowing me to testify today. My name is Dr. Elizabeth Brunner. Um, I have a PhD in Communication from the University of Utah, and I have been conducting surveys, interviews and ethnographic research since twenty-eleven, so for the last fourteen years, with a focus on various environmental issues within the U.S. and abroad. Next slide, please. The purpose of the survey that I designed was to better understand the extent to which tribes were engaged and a consultation process regarding the proposed site's reservoir by the Site's Project Authority. Next slide, please. This slide provides a bit of background on the respondents. We had twelve respondents from eleven unique tribes. All twelve respondents indicated they were authorized to speak on behalf of the tribe they represented. The tribe, or the respondents are geographically dispersed across the North Coast, North State, Sacramento Valley, San Joaquin Valley, Sierra Nevada Mountains and Foothills, and San Francisco Bay Delta. On the map to the right, this represents, this is represented by areas one, two, three, four, five, and six. Next slide, please. Next slides indicate the results of the survey. Some highlights from it. So seventy-five percent of the respondents indicated they were familiar or very familiar with the proposed site's reservoir. Next slide, please. Fifty-eight point three percent indicated that they strongly oppose the project, while thirty-three percent, um, indicated they were neutral and eight point three percent supported. No respondents indicated that they oppose or strongly support the project. Next slide, please. Seven out of eleven tribes indicated that they did not receive a formal request for consultation from the Site's Project Authority, and that would be via phone, mail, email, or another method of contact. Next slide, please. All eight respondents that were not contacted indicated that they believed their tribe should have been consulted. Next slide, please. Seventy-five percent of respondents indicated they were very dissatisfied with the information the Site's Project Authority representatives provided on the proposed site's reservoir and how it may affect tribal resources, cultural and subsistence practice resources, historic properties or ancestral lands. Twenty-five percent indicated they were neutral. Next slide, please. All one hundred percent of the respondents indicated that tribal participants and Site's Project Authority representatives did not agree upon a meeting format and frequency for adequate consultation. And additionally, none of the tribes were offered resources to facilitate tribal participation during that consultation. For example, funding to compensate them for their time. Next slide, please. When asked to rate the tribal participant satisfaction, their satisfaction with the information the Site's Project Authority representatives provided on the proposed site's reservoir and how it may affect tribal resources, cultural and subsistence practices, resources, historic properties or ancestral lands, four indicated they were very dissatisfied, and one indicated they were neutral. Next slide, please. Um, when asked to rate their satisfaction with the resources offered by the Site's Project Authority to facilitate tribal part- participation and consultation, um, one indicated they were neutral and one very dissatisfied. Next slide, please. One hundred percent of the respondents indicated that the Site's Project Authority representatives did not demonstrate sensitivity regarding sacred locations that would potentially be affected by the proposed site's reservoir. Next slide, please. One hundred percent of respondents also indicated that the consultation related to the proposed site's reservoir did not result in an agreement or mutual understanding by the tribe and the Site's Project Authority. Next slide, please. When asked to rate the overall usefulness of the consultation led by the Site's Project Authority regarding the site, the proposed site's reservoir project, sixty percent indicated that it was extremely unhelpful and forty percent indicated they were neutral. Next slide, please. Of the twelve respondents, sixty-six point seven percent indicated that the tribe does anticipate ancestral homelands to be highly significantly or moderately impacted by the proposed site's reservoir, and sixteen point six indicated they anticipated low or no impact. The further breakdowns can be seen on the top right. Next slide, please. Seventy-five percent of respondents indicated they anticipated a higher significant impact on cultural or subsistence resources related to the proposed site's reservoir, and eight point three indicated a low impact. Next slide, please. We did ask respondents to select the geographic areas, if any, that the tribe anticipated might be impacted by the site's reservoir. We also, um, offered respondent space to, um, add further comments. And one respondent added this comment. Up and down the state, from where the Sacramento River begins, all the way to where it enters the ocean will be affected. It will affect water in Sacramento River and the canals used to hold and move the water, the surrounding communities who use the water. All the land will be affected, putting in the pipe to move the water to the sites, to sites. The water sitting in the reservoir with no flow, all the animals, plants, birds that will be displaced, killed in their homeland, taken away forever. Next slide, please. Um, this slide indicates the geographic areas that tribes anticipate will be impacted by the site's reservoir. They were acted, asked to select all that apply. So you can see, um, that they indicate all of the areas from which they responded, uh, the North Coast, North State, Sacramento value, valley, sites, reservoirs, footprint, San Joaquin Valley, Sierra Nevada Mountains and Foothills, and San Francisco Bay Delta area. Next slide, please. Uh, we also asked if the tribe's owned lands would be impacted by the proposed site's reservoir, and, um, to briefly explain um, if they ha- if they were going to be impacted, how they would be impacted. Um, and they listed some of these reasons, wa- uh, some of these impacts. Water quality impacts downstream, impacts to traditional foods, impacts to tribal beneficial uses, um, as well as diminished capacities for cultural practices and the potential to impact water resources and sources. Next slide, please. Um, when asked to rate the severity of the anticipated impacts of the proposed site's reservoir to the owned tribal lands, sixty-six point seven percent said moderately severe and thirty-three percent very severe. Next slide, please. We also provided an opportunity for respondents to answer an open-ended question. What, if any, additional feedback would you like to provide? Um, five people did provide responses, and they indicated concern regarding impacts outside of the immediate project footprint, including concerns over depleting the quality of the water itself, the habitat, and other tribal resources. This feedback suggests that the current process may be inadequate to account for larger ecosystem impacts, and that aligns with the concerns of the scientists that were cited in my testimony. Uh, in addition, respondents indicated frustration with the consultation process, including lack of information, lack of quality data. I'm saying things such as the lands were quote "surveyed," but there weren't any on-the-ground surveyors, um, or a lack of adequate engagement with the people. Uh, this frustration may stem from differing attitudes towards the land, uh, Western science privileges, mechanical surveys, um, traditional ecological knowledge privileges, intimate knowledge of the land stemming from a prolonged relationship, observations, et cetera. So in order to improve that process, so it adequately satisfies tribal concerns, um, the process would need to take into consideration these differing perspectives. That's the end of my oral testimony.
Thank you, Dr. Brunner. Um, Mr. Ferguson and colleagues, do you have a cross-examination for Dr. Brunner?
I do.
All right, uh, you're witness, Mr. Ferguson.
Yeah, Mr. Bivens, just a heads up. I anticipate the authority will be submitting hearsay objections to uh, much of Dr. Brunner's testimony at the appropriate time, but I just want to put that on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson.
Dr. Brunner, good afternoon. My name's Aaron Ferguson. I am an attorney for the Site's Project Authority, and I will be asking you questions regarding your rebuttal testimony this afternoon. Okay?
Nice to meet you.
On page one and two of your testimony, you explained that over the past fifteen years, you've conducted a variety of projects as an academic, including survey research, interviews, focus groups, and ethnographic research, correct?
Correct.
And you also say that a portion of that research has required me to engage with indigenous populations. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Have you previously engaged with any of the eleven tribes that responded to your survey?
No.
Have you ever engaged with any tribes in California?
Yes.
Which tribes are those?
Nisanon.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
The Nisanon tribe.
Have you ever previously engaged with any of the tribes that responded to your survey?
No.
Have you ever engaged with any other tribes in the United States?
Yes.
Assuming the list is brief, which tribes are those? If you can recall.
Um, yes, I've engaged with the Shoshone-Bannock tribes.
I'm sorry, I just heard Shoshone. Was there something else? It's the court reported.
Sure, Shoshone-Bannock tribes.
And what was you, the nature of your engagement with the Nisanon and the Shoshone-Bannock tribes?
I served, I worked with the Nisanon tribes when I worked as the Director of Communications for the South Yubut River Citizens League, and I served as the liaison for the organization at the time.
How about the Shoshone-Bannock tribes?
Um, I have worked with them, um, former representatives on a number of different projects that are relevant to my current research.
And is your work with the Shoshone-Bannock primarily focused on communications for the tribe?
No.
In paragraph, oh, excuse me, on page two, uh, you state that you were commissioned by Friends of the River to gather information from tribes. in California via a survey designed to assess the scope and quality of tribal consultation and engagement led by the Sites Project Authority, correct?
Correct.
Can you please describe the methodology you used to create your survey?
I spoke with Friends of the River to determine what questions they had concern or what issues they had concerns about regarding tribal consultation. So a lot of times what happens with research is that someone has a hunch. They think, hey, I think this might be happening. And then my job is to evaluate whether or not that hunch is true. And so I designed the survey and questions to evaluate the validity of the concerns that they had.
Who had the final say on approval of the survey before it was distributed?
Me.
Did Friends of the River provide their final approval for the survey?
Friends of the River, I worked with Friends of the River to determine whether or not I was answering all of the questions that they wanted answered or evaluating all of the concerns that they had. Was it a did it happen? Did the process happen and what were the did the tribes feel like it was a fair and or what was the quality of the process?
What steps did you take to ensure that the survey was conducted in a neutral and unbiased manner?
I wrote the opening email that requested or I wrote the text that requested, that asked for, that requested participation from all of those people or tribal representatives that were contacted.
When you say the opening email, are you referring to the text that appears at the beginning of FOR three zero seven?
No, sir. It was not submitted as an exhibit.
Oh, okay. Could you explain then what was in the transmittal email and how that ensured that your survey was conducted in a neutral and unbiased manner?
I don't have the email in front of me. But generally speaking, when you design an email like that, you're asking, I'm making sure to ask. It shouldn't be persuasive or coercive. It should be neutral. It should ask for people to respond and it provided my email contact so that they could contact me directly with any questions or concerns about the survey.
Did you take any steps to ensure that the respondents were official representatives and authorized of their tribes and authorized to speak for their tribes?
In the survey, they were asked to confirm that they were authorized to speak on behalf of the tribe that they represented. So self confirmation.
Okay.
And it was distributed to a list of representatives. So it's not as if it was sent to a list beyond the representatives that had been identified.
And with respect to that distribution list, I understand that you distributed the lists, you distributed the survey by email lists maintained by Friends of the River and the California Indian Environmental Alliance, as well as the California Native American Heritage Commission, list of tribal representatives. Is that accurate?
That is all in the testimony.
Why was why was there what you called a short timeframe, I guess approximately two weeks for data collection?
Because we were only because all of the data needed to be gathered and analyzed to be submitted for this.
So by that answer, I understand you may be indicating you were contacted in the middle of January twenty twenty five to prepare the survey. Is that accurate?
I would have to go back and look at the original contact.
Does that sound about right?
I would have to go back and look at the original contact time.
Well, do you know what date you mailed the survey?
I do not specifically recall the date that I emailed the survey. I would have to look back at my records. I don't want to misstate anything.
Just based on your experience with surveys, do you think an emailed survey like the one you distributed that provides two weeks for responses provides an opportunity for meaningful responses by the respondents?
Ideally, you would leave a survey open longer. However, we did receive twelve responses, which is a fifteen percent response rate, which is pretty incredible for the short period of time that it was open and that it was an email only survey and that we were distributing it to people, to tribes who were often under resourced.
Okay. So I think you just confirmed and I apologize if that's in your testimony, it didn't jump out at me, but it, you said twelve percent, twelve respondents represented a fifty percent response rate. Is that right?
One five, fifteen.
Oh, fifteen percent. Okay. What was the total of number, what was the total number of tribes that were contacted with the survey?
Approximately seventy.
And so that's seventy distinct tribes, not seventy representatives, some of which may be some of which may have been multiple representatives responding for one tribe. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay.
Seventy distinct tribes.
Okay. So I'd like to move on to page three at lines fourteen through sixteen. You say that four of the twelve respondents were also listed on the NAHC list of seven tribes, but only two of these four confirmed they had been contacted by sites, correct?
Correct.
Do you offer this statement to try to dispute the authority's claim that it contacted the seven NAHC tribes for consultation?
No, sir.
Okay. On page five, at lines two through four, you indicate, or you state, excuse me, that seventy five percent of the respondents indicated they were familiar or very familiar with the proposed sites reservoir project and that fifty eight point three percent indicated they strongly oppose the project while thirty three point three percent are neutral and eight point three percent supported, correct?
Correct.
Of the twenty five percent that did not indicate they were familiar or very familiar, how many respondents are a little familiar and how many are not familiar at all?
Thank you for asking that question. I did realize when rereading my testimony that I had neglected to include those other percentages, but I can report them now. Eight point three percent said not familiar at all and sixteen point seven indicated they were quote, a little familiar.
Okay. Of the twenty five percent that did not indicate they were familiar or very familiar, which areas within your figure on page four are these respondents located in?
I do not have that data in front of me.
Okay. I'd like to ask you more general question about figure one. Of the twelve respondents, can you identify the zones in figure one that the respondents are from at least by number?
Sure.
Confidentiality is an issue.
It's stated on page four, line three, areas one, two, three, four, five and six. And it was also stated in my oral testimony.
Okay, but I'm asking you, how many respondents are in each of those zones?
I do not have that information in front of me.
Did you tabulate that information?
I could go back and look at some of the raw data. I did not analyze that information. Partially due to desire to keep anonymity.
Do you think it would matter if all the respondents were from zone five as opposed to zone three?
Well, that's impossible because they came from areas one, two, three, four, five and six.
Okay, so do you think it would matter if, I appreciate that. Do you think it would matter if only one respondent came from one, two, three, four and six and all the remainder were in zone five?
Would matter for what purposes?
To speculation. She doesn't have that data to make those sort of determinations.
Do you think your results would be less meaningful if that were the case?
If what were the case?
If only one representative in your respondent group was from one, two, three and four and six and all the remainder were from five?
No.
Why not? Well, let me just ask a more general question. So you don't, do you believe that the geographic location of the respondents had a meaningful difference in the survey results?
All respondents indicated they should have been consulted. They felt they should have been consulted.
Okay. Of the fifty eight point three percent that you indicated strongly opposed the project, did you clarify the reasons why that the tribe claimed they opposed the project?
I did not ask that question.
And none of the respondents offered any information specific as to why they strongly oppose?
Can you repeat that question?
Did, you indicated that you didn't ask the reasons why respondents might have strongly opposed, correct?
Correct.
Did any of the respondents offer any explanation as to why they claimed to be strongly opposed?
There was no room for them to provide that information on the survey.
Okay. My understanding from your testimony is that eight of the respondents claimed they were not contacted by the authority, correct?
Yes, that is what is stated on page five, lines eighteen and nineteen.
Do you happen to know of the eight respondents who claimed they were not contacted? Whether any of those respondents requested formal consultation with the authority?
I do not know the answer to that question. I would have to go back and look at the data to see if I could answer it.
So you believe that you may have data in your survey indicating that certain tribes requested formal consultation?
I have to go back and look at the questions that I asked. So at this point, I cannot answer your question.
So of the four respondents who were contacted by the authority, or at least with respect to those respondents, you say that the other half disagreed that adequate information was provided and the preferred method of contact was used, correct?
Can you please tell me which page and lines you're on?
Yeah. This is Concerns Paragraph twelve.
Page?
It's on page five at line twenty one.
Half of the respondents who were contacted by the sites project authority indicated that, so you can see in the figure five on the bottom, it breaks it down into further detail. Two said the request provided adequate information about the scope of the project and potential impacts. Two said the request was made using the tribe's preferred method of contact. Three said the request was addressed to the appropriate person and two said none of these statements are true.
Okay, so by that information, I understand this to say that there were two of four respondents who were contacted and in response to your survey, they said they disagreed that adequate information was provided and the preferred method of contact was used, correct?
I don't know if those two people were the same that answered yes to those two questions.
Do you know whether either either of those or the single individual asked the authority for further information about the sites project?
Do I know whether or not they asked for additional information?
Yes.
That was not asked in this, that was not asked adjacent to this question.
Did you provide them an opportunity in the survey to explain what specific information they wanted, but contend they were not provided?
No.
And do you know whether they requested specific information that they were not provided by the authority?
I do not know. That would require a different survey, a longer survey and probably some interviews. a different survey, a longer survey, and probably some interviews.
So on page six, at lines ten through fourteen, you explained that for the five respondents indicated that the Sites representatives did not present information or did not present adequate information concerning tribal and cultural resources, correct?
And how it may affect tribal resources, cultural and subsistence practices, historic properties, ancestral lands, et cetera. Correct.
So these four respondents, did any of the, did any of them explain what was inadequate about the information that Sites provided?
I believe you have the survey itself in F O R three zero seven. We did not ask that question.
But you did have a kind of a open-ended opportunity for responses at the end, correct?
We said, is there any? I'd have to pull up the exact phrasing, but is there anything else that you would like to add?
Okay. You have an opinion as to whether the tribes need to help identify important tribal and cultural resources in order for the authority to to be able to conduct an analysis of the potential impact on those resources?
Can you restate the question, please?
Yeah, do you have an opinion as to whether the tribes need to help the authority identify important tribal and cultural resources that may be impacted by the project in order for the authority to conduct a proper analysis of those potential impacts?
I'm gonna object, that's outside the scope of her expertise.
Overall.
My understanding is that tribal and cultural resources are kept very close for many reasons. These are not pieces of information, their locations are not pieces of information that tribes want to share for a number of reasons. And so this kind of information should be, and the willingness of the tribe to disclose exact locations, or the extent to which they decide to disclose the specificity of the location is something that should occur during the tribal consultation process.
Did any of the survey respondents indicate that they may not have requested additional information from the authority or engaged in a specific fashion because they were concerned about maintaining confidentiality related to the tribal and cultural resources relevant to their tribe?
That was not asked in the survey.
On page seven, at lines three and four, you state that additionally, none of the tribes were offered resources to facilitate tribal participation in consultation, e.g. funding. Correct?
Correct.
Can you clarify what this sentence means?
Sure. It states that none of the tribes were offered resources to facilitate their tribal participation in consultation, such as funding to compensate them for their time, funding to compensate them for their travel, and so forth.
Yeah, by this sentence, I couldn't tell whether you were saying that well, let me ask you. Did the tribes respond that they were not offered resources to facilitate tribal participation in consultation? Or are you stating that none of them responded to this effect?
When asked, were you offered resources to facilitate tribal participation in consultation? All of them said, "No, we were not." Does that clarify?
Okay. Yes. Are you aware of the authority's ongoing funding of tribal monitoring for geotechnical exploration efforts?
No.
Are you aware of the authorities offered to tribes participating in consultation to fund ethnographic studies?
No. I mean, other than what I've skinned.
This you are aware that the the authority has done those two things that I just mentioned, based on your review of certain documents?
I'm, I'm not aware, sorry, let me restate. I'm not aware of specific any specific funding that Sites may have given to any of the tribes for any of these. Did you say geogra-, geo-, geotechnical surveys? No, I'm not familiar with any specifics.
Okay, and it sounds like from this response that none of the tribes mentioned the authorities either of these efforts. Is that correct?
It did not ask, did, did you receive funding for geotechnical surveys?
Okay. Well, let me just make a general request as we continue through my questions. To the extent I ask you whether, whether the respondents responded in a certain way, I'm including the opportunity for the kind of the free response that you have at the end of your survey, to the extent they want to offer any additional information. Do you understand that?
I understand that, but the what, the questions that you're asking are questions that go outside the scope of the survey. So I can only present to you the information and the data that I collected. I cannot speculate on anything else, nor did I ask that. It wa-, it was not a survey that asked follow-up questions with qualitative spaces for qualitative responses. And the question at the end was, is there anything else that you would like to add? So I would be shocked if someone said, "Yeah, you know, I didn't receive enough funding for geotechnical surveys." Like, that's, that's not gonna happen. It would be more most of the time when you ask a question like that, you get broad answers that speak to the general kind of data that the survey is trying to collect. They're not, I'm not going to receive such specific answers.
Okay, I, I appreciate that broader explanation. I just want to make sure that you understand when I'm asking a question about whether the tribes responded in a certain way, I'm also referring to that kind of free response opportunity at the end of your survey, okay?
Sure, but you received the survey itself in F O R three oh seven, and so you know that I didn't ask any of these specific follow-up questions with room for them to respond.
Well, I'm not focused on follow-up questions.
But I also
Sorry to belabor this, but
I can just only present the data that I collected. I, I, and I don't expect that they would give me the answers to the questions that you're asking in the free-form response at the end. That
Well, all I'm asking is that if I ask you a question about whether they responded in a certain way, and they did respond in that free-form response in that certain way, that you let me know that, okay?
I also
Is that fair?
I don't think that it's fair to ask me to go back to the original free-form responses and reanalyze them to assess whether or not they're answering a wide variety of questions that you're asking me right now.
So let me, let me jump in here. So, Dr. Brunner, if, if you received something in the free-form responses that is responsive to Mr. Ferguson's question, you should let him know.
Okay, nothing that I recall, but you, I, I feel like it's pretty unfair to ask me to either go back into the data and analyze it as he's asking me the questions, or have prepared answers to questions that I didn't know would be asked.
Yes.
My recollection, no. I, none of these questions were answered.
Okay, I appreciate that. And if you don't recall, then just tell me you don't recall, but sorry, Mr. Ferguson.
Yeah, I was gonna say, let's, let's not belabor this issue too much further, Mr. Ferguson. I think you both made your point.
Mr. Ferguson, you're muted.
Yeah, on page seven, lines seven through nine, you indicate that a hundred percent of respondents indicated that the authority representatives did not demonstrate sensitivity regarding sacred locations that would potentially be affected by the project, correct?
Mm-hmm, that is correct.
Did any of the respondents indicate how they, they believe the authority representatives did not demonstrate sensitivity?
Are you asking me to look through the data of the last question again?
Well, I'm just asking from your recollection, you've reviewed the survey, you conducted the survey, you've reviewed the surveys, you've summarized it in your testimony. I think it's fair to ask you a question about the responses.
And let me, let me add just one direction for Dr. Brunner's benefit, that we do not expect you to go through on the fly these survey results and to, in order to respond to Mr. Ferguson's question. If, if you recall, answer to the best of your recollection, and if you don't, you should just say that, that that's perfectly fine response.
Okay, can you please repeat, repeat the question, Mr. Ferguson?
You, you are on mute again, Mr. Ferguson.
It's been a long day.
Agreed, and we will actually, before you repeat the question for Dr. Brunner, I'll, I'll just ask, how much more time do you think you're gonna spend on this? Because I, I will need a break relatively soon.
I'm thinking like fifteen to twenty minutes.
All right, let's go, uh, let's go till four o'clock and then look at a break.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so my question, Dr. Brunner, was, did you, did any of the respondents indicate specifics about how the Sites Project Authority representatives did not demonstrate sensitivity?
No, not to my recollection.
In line seventeen through nineteen on the same page, you provide results regarding questions concerning usefulness of consultation, correct?
Correct.
Did any of the respondents indicate what they believed would have made the consultation more helpful?
No, sir, that was outside the bounds of this survey.
So I'm gonna move over to your testimony on page, bottom of page eight and top of page nine, and I'll just ask you, did did any of the respondents provide a basis for their assertion that their tribe anticipates ancestral homelands to be impacted by the Sites reservoir?
They did not. It was not a free-form question.
Did you clarify to the respondents what a quote-unquote "high" or quote-unquote "significant" impact means?
I did not. That is self-determined, for the tribes to determine.
I guess I'll just ask you a more general question about your descriptions in each of these survey responses, to the extent they use, I would say, qualitative indicators. Did you provide any sort of definitional guidelines in order for them to kind of be able to distinguish, you know, for example, in this case, high versus significant?
I did not. That's for them to decide based on their information that they know about their resources.
And that same response applies to all the responses that have this kind of gradation of potential responses?
That is correct.
Okay. Is is there a reason you didn't provide the complete responses in their entirety as part of your testimony?
Can you please clarify to what you're referring to?
Well, I assume you, can you please clarify that you received back complete responses from these twelve respondents? You received a written document or an electronic document back from them containing the responses, correct?
I received responses which were captured via an online survey, and I am able to see all of the results, yes.
And is there a reason that you didn't provide complete printouts of every one of those electronic responses as an exhibit with your testimony?
Yes, to preserve anonymity.
Could you have redacted identifying information from those responses and provided the the complete response? And when I say identifying information, I'm talking about names, addresses, locations.
Sure, I can respond to that. I can say that in the beginning we specifically stated that your data will not be provided individually, it will only be provided like within the data set, and that was to preserve anonymity. And so, no, I will not and cannot provide you individual responses with names redacted.
Okay. All right, I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. What's our order? D W R, does D W R have any questions for Dr. Brunner?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soderland. Do state water contractors have questions for Dr. Brunner?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mandel Rice. And does the Bureau of Reclamation have questions for Dr. Brunner?
I do not, please.
Thank you. Ms. Willie, do you have a redirect for Dr. Brunner? And if so, can you give me a, a time estimate?
I do. And it shouldn't take more than ten minutes.
Very good. Let's do redirect, and then we will take a short break. Your witness, Ms. Willie.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm just running my spot. Um, so you discussed a little bit, um, the steps to ensure that there was no bias within the survey. Um, and in that you discussed, um, writing the email request yourself. Um, could you explain a little bit just the steps that led up um, to that email and, you know, creating the email list and the process that goes into creating the survey before it gets sent out?
Sure.
And, sorry, just to add, um, just in, in the way that it, um, applies to creating a survey that there's no bias.
Sure, so for every, um, I g- I guess, I'm trying to decide where exactly to start. Um, when you create a survey, you are trying your best, um, to, um, not, I guess, if I was gonna use legal terms, lead the witness, um, to make any assumptions uh, that they have. For example, let's take the, um, the question about the, um, water, right? Uh, well, okay, let's take the question about their familiarity with the proposed sites reservoir. Um, for everything, I'm trying to give the respondent the opportunity to, um, like, present the, uh, hold on, let me rewind. Um, I'm not trying to make assumptions that they are familiar with a proposed sites reservoir. I'm not trying to make assumptions that they, um, strongly oppose or strongly support the reservoir. Um, when I did this, uh, when I gathered this information, I made clear to Friends of the River that I would present to them the inform, that I wanted to make an unbiased survey, that I would present the information regardless of whether or not it's supported, or, um, went against their assumptions. The purpose of the survey was to determine, um, did they go through the process, were they contacted, and were they satisfied with the process? I do not have a dog in the fight, so to speak, and so every single question, um, was tailored to better understanding the process without trying to say that I am for or against the process. None of the questions, none of the statements, um, state any kind of position that I may have, or that I'm trying to get a particular type of information from this survey. So as a researcher, I need to maintain objectivity, um, which I did through this. And I made sure that when people received the survey, even though it was from maybe a Friends of the River representative, or, um, um, since it was not coming from me, that, that nothing was put in there other than my specific request. I stated what it was for. I stated why I was collecting the data. I stated what I would do with the data. And, um, I directed them to me with any questions, comments, or concerns. So I was keeping everything, I was controlling all of the information gathering, um, collection and, um, assessment. Does that answer your question?
Thank you. Um, and so relatedly, Mr. Ferguson asked you about, um, answers that were given, high, low, no impact. Um, specifically, we'll take the cultural resources, um, question. And he asked if you had put guidelines in the question, examples. Um, if you had offered some sort of example, um, of an impact to a tribal cultural resource, do you believe that would have influenced the, um, answers that were given or impacted the answers given in any way?
It could have potentially done that. Every tribe is unique and different, and they all considered their cultural resources differently and impacts to them differently.
Thank you. Um, and then just lastly, you spoke a little bit about your reasoning for not submitting responses and maintaining anonymity. Um, are you familiar with the phrase or, um, idea of tribal data sovereignty?
Um, to some degree, um, will you elaborate? And I will confirm or, or I will confirm whether or not my understanding aligns with your understanding.
Um, okay, so from my understanding, tribal data sovereignty is data that tribes have, um, specific and to them themselves, and the sovereignty, the importance of the sovereignty, um, is, you know, maintaining that confidentiality so that it doesn't get shared. Um, oftentimes, if that data can be taken by other resources and used by other people, so maintaining that data sovereignty for tribes is um, is what that refers to.
Yes, that is my understanding of it, um, as well, and I spoke about this a little bit and, um, when Mr. Ferguson asked. But if tribes share sensitive data, they risk that being used against them um, in, in other ways down the line. So, and it has been in the past, and so it definitely makes sense that tribes would want to, um, keep that data under their own purview and only share it when absolutely needed.
So, just to clarify, you would consider the data that was collected to be considered, um, you would consider that tribal data?
Yes, and we were very careful. Well, some people, there were questions on there about cultural resources, and so, yes, I would consider that sovereign data, and I would not share that, especially as individual responses.
Thank you, that's all my reading questions.
All right, thank you, um, Dr. Brunner for your time this afternoon. Um, and Ms. Willie, uh, let's take a, let's take a seven minute break. Come back at 4:05 PM. Oh, and, and Dr. Brunner, you are, you are excused.
Thank you, sir.
You are welcome to continue to observe, but I suspect you have other things to do. Um, let's go, let's come back at 4:05 and we will resume with the direct testimony of Dr. Smallwood, and then, um, well, we'll, we'll come back and talk about the schedule in a moment. Thank you. Off the record.
Hi, it's the reporter. Thank you for that break. I am ready when you are.
You're most welcome. Um, let's go back on the record. Um, Mr. Hitchens, are you, uh, here and, and Mr. Mooney all, or whoever is, uh, in charge of, uh, Dr. Smallwood from the protesting side, I'll certainly allow you to weigh on, on this as well. My proposal would be that we get through Dr. Smallwood's, um, direct testimony and as much cross-examination, uh, as we can accomplish uh, in a reasonable time by five o'clock. Um, is that, is that an acceptable way to proceed?
Uh, Mr.?
Oh, go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Mooney. Yeah, um, Mr. Bivins, I definitely have, well, I'm pretty certain I have, um, about an hour to an hour and a half. And I, if, if, if tomorrow looks like we're only gonna be, because at this point, we will be going into tomorrow. Uh, if it's only gonna be Dr. Smallwood, Mr. Buckley, and possibly Ms. Moreno. Um, I, I'd prefer that if we could start the, um, cross tomorrow, uh, that would be helpful, um, because I think we're probably not even gonna be using the whole day tomorrow at this point.
That, that, that sounds fine to me. Um, Mr. Mooney, any, any objections to proceeding that way?
Well, does that mean you wanna do the direct today, the summary today?
Yes, let's do the, let's do the summary at least today. I mean, we've got, we've got almost an hour. Um, and I can't imagine Dr. Smallwood is gonna spend an hour summarizing his testimony, or, or, well, you tell me if you feel differently, but.
No, I, I, we, we've pretty much told our witnesses to keep it to 20 minutes, so.
Wonderful.
Um, so I suspect that would be that. And so, so just so I'm clear, so once he finishes his summary, then we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, close for the day and then come back tomorrow and, and start the cross?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay.
All right, let's, uh, let's get Dr. Smallwood on the screen, please.
Oh, I see. Getting there.
Dr. Smallwood, are you, uh, there you are.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, welcome back. Um, I know that you have, uh, previously testified in this proceeding, so I'll just remind you that you're, you remain under oath in testifying under penalty of perjury, and I will, uh, turn the floor over to you, Mr. Mooney, to present your witness.
Sure. Uh, uh, could you please state your name for the record?
Kenneth Sean Smallwood.
And is exhibit, uh, FOR 3344 an accurate statement of your written testimony?
Yes.
And did you prepare that testimony?
I did.
And is exhibit, uh, FOR 17 an accurate statement of your qualifications?
Yes, up to the point where I submitted it. I have since, yeah, yes.
And since then, what, you, you've added some, uh, journals or?
Yeah, numerous reports and another paper on Burrow and else published in the science literature.
And are exhibits, uh, FOR 345 to FOR 360, um, true and correct copies of your exhibits to the text, to your, to your written testimony?
Yes.
Okay. And is exhibit FOR 361 an accurate summary of your testimony?
Yes.
And did you prepare that summary?
I did.
Okay, and, and I guess if we could have, Ms. Smallwood, if we could have FOR 361 brought up on the screen, and then, uh, Dr. Smallwood, if you could then, uh, summarize your testimony.
Sure. So here, I present a summary of rebuttal testimony responsive to the Science Project Authority Witnesses, Lisa Weber and Jennifer Hale. Can I have the, uh, next slide? Here I show a typical flow of how, uh, environmental reviews typically work. Actually presented this, uh, annual meeting of the Wildlife Society, uh, a few weeks ago in Visalia. We, the first steps are data gathering, typically a desktop review, which will, for wildlife, examine which species have geographic, geographic range maps that overlap the project site. There'll be, uh, review of database occurrence records for the species in the area. There'll be habitat associations in most cases. And usually, there's a reconnaissance survey effort, which often combines with a habitat assessment. And then for special task species, there are typically detection surveys. All of these are not always performed. It depends if there, there, there's reasonable, uh, likelihood that they occur there. It depends if there, there's reasonable likelihood that they occur there. From these steps, we go to the characterization of the wildlife community. It typically involves a list of species that were detected during the surveys and special status species occurrence likelihoods. These are often presented as none, low, medium, high, or certain because they were seen. And then from there, we go on to determinations of impact predictions and significance. So that's usually how it goes. And the two first steps, the data gathering and the characterization of the wildlife community, these are intended to support or precede the decision about the project. They're intended to disclose potential impacts. Next slide, please. I could have the next, thank you. So what I'm going to talk about, or what you talk about in my rebuttal testimony is some of the problems I found with the process at Sites Reservoir. And these are summarized in red font here. So the database occurrence records, for example, were exclusive of earlier surveys that were performed. And for, as far as I can tell, these earlier surveys were good surveys, but they were not assessed by the wildlife biologist for the site's project. These database occurrence records were also based on a misuse of the California Natural Diversity Database, otherwise known as CNDDB. The habitat associations were linked to unvalidated land cover maps and unvalidated habitat models. So we had a shaky start. And from there, impact estimates were made and mitigation formulated. Reconnaissance survey and habitat assessment was not completed, at least not in time for the EIR/ EIS. The biologists were instructed, as we learned from recent testimony, we were instructed not to survey the project site. The detection services for special status species were not completed. There's been incomplete inadequate data, I'm sorry, incomplete and inadequate data of unknown error rates and unknown biases following no serious effort to test the accuracy of the land cover map. That's what led to the characterization of the wildlife community. The list of species detected cannot be provided without surveys having been performed. The special status species occurrence likelihoods were based on unvalidated, unreported models. From here, we have a flawed baseline environmental setting. There's no use of ecologically meaningful metrics such as productivity or numerical capacity of species. Ms. Hale, her testimony was unable to even guess how many burrowing owls might reside on the project site. Impact predictions were based on acreage rather than these metrics. These metrics, by the way, are important because they, they link what's found at the project site to what's been found elsewhere. It enables the comparative method, which is important to science. If you have comparable metrics, you really are looking at information from the site alone. There's no way to interpret the results relative to others, you know, relative experience elsewhere. The significant determinations were also made using a novel term of unclear inconsistent meaning applied to acres of land cover types as surrogates for species and mitigation consisting of mostly of pre-concepted surveys. And the next slide, please. ICS biologists used the CNDDB in exactly the way the CNDDB warrants against. It's a positive site and database that is not suitable for making species absence determinations. It's not even suitable for rank, you know, deriving probabilities of occurrence or occurrence likelihoods. It's not intended to be a shortcut to doing surveys. Habitat models were developed for species in lieu of survey data, but the habitat models are not described in the reports, in any reports, or in the EIR/ EIS. In lieu of onsite survey data, the analysts were still capable of estimating impacts in terms of productivity and numerical capacity. The comparative method could have been used to draw inferences from other studies of wildlife in similar nearby, nearby environments like I have done, for some cases, some species. My rebuttal testimony provides additional examples of this approach, this time involving loggerhead strike, California ground squirrel, and bottles pocket gopher. My rebuttal testimony also includes examples of the comparative method for estimated impacts caused specifically by inundation of a reservoir, in this case, the expansion of the local karos reservoir and around which my colleagues and I studied telemetried golden eagles. And it's golden eagles with telemetry backpacks that we've been tracking for years.
I'm sorry, that is golden eagles with, I couldn't understand. Could you slow down just a little bit? That would help me out a lot. Thank you.
I will try. So, so these are golden eagles that were flying around with telemetry backpacks. These are devices that record the positions of the eagles wherever they are. We've tracked them from Canada to Mexico, but they spent most of the time in the Ultima Pass, which is our main research site. So our study around Los Veloceros reservoir, which expanded, involved telemetry data from some of our eagles that had set up home ranges, nesting territories around the reservoir. Finally, on this page, Ms. Hale's conclusions of project benefits to wildlife are speculative and likely inaccurate. Can I have the next slide, please? Ms. Weber and Ms. Hale testified that it is standard practice to forego surveys at larger project sites and to instead map vegetation cover and model species occurrences. But the evidence refutes their testimony. And the evidence I'm referring to is in this figure. This is the result of a logit regression from my review of, of more than 300 environmental reviews. Projects the site, the size of Sites Reservoir, which on the right side of this graph, stand a 95% chance that, well, 95% by the time, I should say, there's a survey, at least one survey. For projects that are very small, only a few acres in size to the left of the graph, there's more like a 50% likelihood the survey is going to be conducted. So the larger the, the larger the project area, the more likely the survey is actually going to take place. This is what the data tell us. Sites Authority should have provided ICS biologists with access to survey the project site. That's the most important thing to do when you're doing an environmental review for wildlife or plants. Survey the site. ICS biologists should have surveyed from public roads at a minimum. If they didn't have access to the project site, they should have been surveying from the roads or from the periphery, or as close as they can get to the project site. Ms. Weber and Ms. Hale testified that they were instructed not to survey for plants and wildlife on the site. Can I have the next slide, please? Ms. Hale opted not to use CDFW survey data, that's California Department of Fish and Wildlife, survey data from 22 to 27 years ago. She said the data were old. But now, having not performed surveys in support of the EIR/ EIS, the CDFW data were the best available data. The data were not old for the use to which they were needed as they serve as evidence of the presence of each species that had been detected by CDFW. To demonstrate that roadside surveys provide superior baseline data on species occurrence than no surveys at all, Noriko Smallwood and I completed roadside surveys on a third date, a third date compared to what I reported previously. Across three survey dates, totally in less time than a standard workday, we detected 70 species of vertebrate wildlife without walking on any private property. A serious survey effort with full access to properties would reveal a richly populated wildlife community with many special status species. Already, 69 special status species of wildlife are known to the site's project area. Compared to other sites I have reviewed, 69 special status species stands out. In fact, it's remarkable. I usually get maybe 10 or 15 or 20 species at the most. 69 is really unusual. Anyway, this is indicative of one of the most ecologically intact portions of grassland and foothill repairing environments of California. Next slide. Ms. Hale did not explain how any of the CDFW 2012 mitigation measures would avoid or minimize project impacts to burrowing owl. As of October 2024, the burrowing owl is a candidate for listing under the California Endangered Species Act. Burrowing owls are known to project site, but an unknown is how many occur there. No surveys have been conducted for burrowing owls. And is there a next slide? Is there a next slide?
That appears to be slide seven to seven, Dr. Smallwood.
Okay, good. Thank you. I'm done.
All right, thank you, Dr. Smallwood. So we'll pick up with Dr. Smallwood's cross-examination tomorrow morning. Before we adjourn for the day, are there any housekeeping or scheduling items we should address?
Only that, if we hear from Ms. Marino tonight or tomorrow about her availability, we will send out something as soon as we hear. But at this point in time, I would, it would be my expectation that she's not going to be available tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mooney.
And, and just to confirm, Mr. Buckley will be available as scheduled, correct?
Uh, yes, as far as I know. Thank you. Yeah. That's, that's our plan.
Great. All right, everyone. Thank you for your time today. And we were adjourned. I'll see you all tomorrow morning.
Thank you.